Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council for Tuesday, February 10, 2009. If you'd all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Fox. Councilmember Bill De La Peña is absent at this time. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Mayor Clancy is absent. And Mayor Pro Tem Gillette?
To advise the council and the community, Dr. Tom Clancy is not with us this evening. He's at home recovering from surgery. And if you would all please keep him and Karen and their family and your thoughts and prayers, we look for him joining us, rejoinsing us just as quickly as he can. Thank you. Item four, request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item. Item five B, the commendation to KCLU will be presented on March 10. That was at the request of the university. Any other continuance? Thank you. At this time, we have a number of presentations, and to do that, I'm going to come down to the podium, so you bear with me for just a minute. Get the lectern. This past January, we were proud to announce that Thousand Oaks Police Chief Dennis Carpenter was being promoted to a chief deputy position with the Ventura County Sheriff's Department. At this time, if I could ask Chief Carpenter and also the Sheriff of Ventura County, Sheriff Dennis Carpenter is a 31-year officer with the Sheriff's Department and has been our police chief for four years. He's done an exceptional job. Name just a few of his accomplishments. Dennis ensured Thousand Oaks remained one of the safest cities in the nation. Converted the DARE program to School Resource Officers Program, which places an officer on each public high school campus and allows them to work out and extend to the intermediate schools and elementary schools that are served by that high school. Appointed the city's first Internet Predator detective and initiated the Business Watch and City Watch programs. I'd like to invite Dennis to say a couple words at this time. Please do.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, I had an opportunity to address the department heads recently and express my appreciation for the great teamwork and camaraderie that I experienced while serving on the executive team. They're a great crew, and shout out to them for a big thank you for allowing me to be a part of their team. As a police department, we tackled many safety issues, youth safety issues, and I am proud to say that we had some success in that regard. And I have to say, though, it's based, quite frankly, on the blood and blisters of people like Captain Randy Pentis, who's back here behind me, Captain Bruce Watlington, Captain Rick Barrios, Captain Mike De La Santos, Sergeants Joe Evans, Jim Freihoff, Jim Kenny, Bob Fleming, Mark O'Donnell, Don Aguilar, senior deputies like Larry Logan, Jim De Soto, Dennis Leiva, Rick Godfrey, Bill Theory, and Kelly Rourke, Mike Panic, and a host of deputy sheriffs, men and women who patrol the streets, crime analysts, traffic investigators, cadets, office staff, people that I had the pleasure of working for, are all part of the success of this department. I want to thank the council for their continued support of public safety and support of me as your chief. It's been both personally and professionally rewarding to serve this community and be a part of this team. The Mayor Pro Tem attended a going-away luncheon for me and presented me with a commendation from the city, and I thank all of you for that. I believe I actually will miss the council meetings. Maybe. But most importantly, I'll miss working with all of you.
To introduce Commander Jeff Mattson, I would like to invite Ventura County Sheriff Bob Brooks to come up.
Thank you, members of the council and Mr. Mitnick. It's a pleasure to be here. This is an event that's happened several times since I've been sheriff. As a 35-year resident of Thousand Oaks, I spent most of my adult life here. I take a great deal of interest, personal interest, in the appointment of a chief for your Thousand Oaks Police Department. And my first experience of that was nearly 12 years ago. I was an incoming sheriff, hadn't taken the seat yet, and I got a call in Texas from Grant Brimhall, and he said, "I know what people are telling me I should do. What do you think I ought to do for the next Thousand Oaks Police Department chief?" And I said, "Well, you know, you've never heard of Kathy Kemp. She's a brand-new commander, but I can stake my reputation that you won't be sorry if you pick her." And Grant would have made me sorry if that decision didn't work out, but he was very, very pleased. And then when it was time for Kathy to be reassigned, I had to talk to Mary Jane Lazz and said, "Mary Jane, I just got to tell you, Keith Parks is going to do a good job. Trust me, I put my reputation on the line." I certainly had to do that again with Dennis Carpenter, and Dennis has made us all very proud, and I'm thrilled to be able to promote him to the executive ranks of the Sheriff's Department. So once again, I come before you and say, "Jeff Mattson's going to do a terrific job for you. He's highly educated. He has a wealth of law enforcement experience. He was the Assistant Chief of Police in Thousand Oaks before. He was the chief of the city of Moor Park, and I know he's going to make a great chief for you as well." So Jeff, I'd like to introduce you.
Honorable Mayor Clancy O'Hanlon, who's watching at home, Mayor Pro Tem Dennis Gillette, distinguished council members and city staff, thank you for this opportunity to take over this very prestigious job. I've had a lot of great assignments in the Ventura County Sheriff's Department, and I think my best assignments have been here in the Thousand Oaks area. I want to thank Sheriff Bob Brooks for allowing me to compete for the position. I want to thank City Manager Scott Mitnick for selecting me for the assignment, and I want to thank Dennis Carpenter for helping me transition seamlessly into this job. I look forward with working with the leadership of this city. I look forward to working with the residents, the business owners, and the school district and city staff, and I promise I will do a good job for you.
Tonight, we are recognizing a very special event. Dr. Seuss is celebrating his 105th birthday. Colleen Briner Schmidt, would you please come join me at the podium? Colleen, we are happy to have you here this evening. Your visits are always interesting and enjoyable. We always look forward to your outfit and your hats. You've worked for several years with the Cano Valley Unified School District, the United Association of Cano Teachers, on the Read Across America program, a wonderful literacy program for our elementary school children. I've had the opportunity and a number of my colleagues on the council to appear at some of the schools over the years and read to the kids, and even on occasion gotten to wear one of the hats. That's kind of a neat experience. Before I present our proclamation recognizing March 2, 2009, as Dr. Seuss' birthday and Read Across America, would you please tell our audience about the program?
That Steve I am, that Steve I am, I do not like that Steve I am. That Steve thinks he is just so cool because he learned to read in a Cano Valley school.
Do you like to read all day?
I do not like to, Steve, I say. Would you read books here or there? I would not read books here or there. I would not read books anywhere. I do not like to read all day. I do not like to read, I say.
Would you read books in a house? Would you read books to a mouse? Would you read books in a box? Would you read with Mr. Fox? I know you read. Well, I'll even bet you'd like to read with Mr. Gillette.
Not in a house, not to a mouse, not in a box, not with Mr. Fox. Keep those books in a sack. I will not read with Mr. Gillette.
Come on, reading is fun. It will tickle your fancy. Would you read with Mayor Clancy? Books are amazing. They put your mind in a whirlwind. Come on, read a book with Mrs. Irwin. The excitement is there. It's hard to contain you if you only will read with Miss Bill De La Peña.
It is not fun. It is not fancy. I will not read with Mayor Clancy, nor Miss Bill De La Peña, nor Mrs. Irwin. I don't care what they've been doing.
Now, you don't like to read, or so you say. Try it, try it, and you may try reading, and you may, I say...
Steve, if you will let me be, I will try to read, and you will see. Say. I like to read this book. I do, I do. I think I'm hooked. Find all the books that you can get. I want to read with Mr. Gillette. Hurry now, or I'll get fancy. I can't wait to read with Mayor Clancy. I'll read the book, I will read books in a house, I will read books with a mouse, in a box with Mr. Fox, I'll get stirring with Mrs. Irwin. You've tried so hard. I really don't blame you. I can't wait to read with Mrs. Bill De La Peña. I will read books here and there. I will read books everywhere. I even like to read about him. Thank you. Thank you, Sam I Am. So Read Across America is coming. The National Education Association, this is an annual event. This year's theme is Reading Is Cool, March 2. There'll be activities happening all across the Cano Valley and all of the schools, because the goal is for every child to read a half hour with an adult. Now, we have great test scores in the Cano Valley, but it's not test scores that we're looking for. We're looking for lifelong readers. And if we get lifelong readers, when you get readers. When kids are hooked on books, they're hooked on the good things in life. So we are encouraging every child to read. They become better spellers, better thinkers, and are excited about the world. And this year, a new event is happening. We are going to do a read aloud extravaganza at the Thousand Oaks Library. We'll have, the Cat in the Hat will be there to greet people. We'll have Biscuit, the dog, will be there. Celebrity readers, a read-in area, and an area for crafts. So we invite everyone to come on March 2 from 4 to 8 at the Thousand Oaks Library. Because you people have given us such a great facility, let's bring attention to it and encourage every child to read. You're never too old, too wacky, too wild, to pick up a book to read with a child.
You're never too busy, too cool, or too hot, to pick up a book and share what you've got.
In schools and communities, let's gather around, let's pick up a book, let's pass it around. There are kids all around you, kids who will need someone to hug and someone to read.
Join us on March 2 at the Thousand Oaks Library.
And make this America's Read to Kid Day.
Thank you. Oh, and we have a poster for you.
Oh, thank you.
And one more thing. Thank you. We have a Reading Is Cool official water bottle.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you. Well, let me, if you want to stay up, we're going to get a picture here in just a minute, but let me, I have something for you.
Hold the poster.
You want this also?
Okay. Let's have our Cat in the Hat.
One second. Folks, this is a proclamation in honor of Read Across America Day. Read Across America Day, a national celebration, is scheduled for March 2, 2009, and the Cano Valley Unified School District and the Unified Association of Cano Teachers co-sponsor this event to promote reading literacy for all students. And Read Across America Day celebrates what would have been the 105th birthday of the great children's storyteller, Dr. Seuss. And Read Across America Day promotes reading and adult involvement in the education of our community students. Now therefore, Thomas Clancy, the mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, does hereby proclaim March 2, 2009, as Read Across America Day and urge residents to join our local teachers and administrators in this important event. Thank you all very much. At this time, I'd like to ask Francine Spiegel to join me. Francine?
Hi. How are you tonight?
Good. Francine works with our Youth Commission and Council on Aging. She's doing a wonderful job with both programs. Tonight, she's going to tell us about an exciting Youth Commission event, the Ninth Annual Rock the Oaks Concert, where teens will be able to enjoy local rock bands. On February 27, these chambers will be transformed into Rock Concert Hall. Francine?
Well, that's a tough act to follow. Mayor Pro Tem, council and staff, thank you very much for giving the Youth Commission an opportunity to be here tonight to promote this event. The commissioners put a lot of time in listening to demo CDs and listening to auditions, and they've chosen the final four bands. So I guess the question is now, are you ready to rock the Oaks? We have four really hard-working commissioners here tonight that are going to tell you a little bit about the bands. So can you come up, please? And I'll turn this over to Jared Hatland. He's the chair of the events.
Well, as Francine said, we're the Youth Commission. We put on this event, and the first band who will be performing will be The Violet Hour. They were formed in 2007 and feature vocalist Alec McCott, Michael Topper and Sawyer Fox on guitar, Ryan Brown on bass, and Josh Pearlman on drums. This exciting, up-and-coming young band has already played at venues such as the Teen Centers Battle of the Band and Rock City, where they set the all-time attendance record. And now to introduce our next band is Commissioner Johnson. The next performer in the Rock the Oaks lineup is David Pramick. Last year, David came to Rock the Oaks as the lead singer of the band titled Big Brother, but this year, he returns as a vocalist, guitarist, and pianist, along with Josh Engel on bass and Chris Pramick on drums. He is talented in a variety of ways and on a multitude of instruments, including the piano, guitar, and even the ukulele. His soothing classical jazz style and terrific self-written lyrics foreshadow great things for David in the future. Our next commissioner, Hannah Hung, will introduce the third amazing band.
Jetstream is our next band, with four talented players who have opened for American Idol finalist Bo Bice and won the 2007 U.S. Battle of the Bands, which took them to London, competing in the Global Battle of the Bands, where they took second against bands from 23 other countries. Just recently signing with RCA Records, Jetstream is clearly capable of making their way to the top, but it is just the beginning for this amazing rock band. The final credible band for the evening will be introduced by Commissioner Lindsay Dimon. To round out our evening, we have Jason Sharp. Jason recently put out his first EP, and all he wants to do is make you smile. He played with Colby Collet and Jason Reeves and loves to perform for an energetic crowd. He has a very lively and upbeat sound with a clear passion for performing. We cannot wait for the night of the concert.
The concert will be held in here on February 27 at 7:30. Tickets are available at Ticketmaster.com or at the city box office. Seating is limited, so please get your seats while there are some left. We have an exciting TOTV promotional video that we'd like to show to you. This is also available on YouTube or on the city's website, so if you ever want to check it out, it's right there for you. And now, on behalf of the youth of the community and my fellow commissioners here, we'd like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to advertise our show. We'd also like to say thanks to the city, TOTV, and the Alliance for the Arts, and the Civic Arts Plaza Foundation and Time Warner Cable for sponsoring this event. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming down tonight. That's February 27. You got it. Our final presentation this evening. For that, I am pleased to invite Sharon Barrett to join me. Sharon, founder and longtime director of the Canoe Free Clinic, is now retiring. Congratulations. That's what it's all about, isn't it? Yeah. Trust me, I know about retirements. Since 1976, this nonprofit organization has offered medical, legal, and patient advocacy services at no cost or minimal cost to those in need. Eighty physicians, nurses, and office staff volunteer their time. Sharon, the Canoe Free Clinic can be proud of their service to the community. We'd like to present you with a commendation acknowledging your dedication and hard work. Before I do that, would you like to say a few words?
I really want to thank the City of Thousand Oaks for this great honor. I will cherish it forever, and I already have a spot on my wall where this is going to hang, and it's a place where everybody will have to pass by it as they come into the house. In 1976, when we started the free clinic, I had no intention or desire to be here 33 years later, but the need has just grown tremendously, and even as I retire, the need is going to be even greater in the next coming years, as we've seen before. So it has been a great privilege to be part of this, and it wouldn't be, I couldn't do it without the help of the City of Thousand Oaks. From the very, very beginning, from our first community meeting, the city was there to support us and has supported us for 33 years, through the under-one roof building where we are located, to our city block grant, which has helped sustain us through many bad times. And so it is the vision of this city that I am so proud to be part of, that it sees the needs of its citizens and comes forward to help with it. So once again, I really thank you for this honor, and I will cherish it, and I will miss those block grant meetings. After 20-some years of talking to you and asking for money, I'm going to feel kind of left out here, but I hope you continue your support. Thank you so much.
Sharon, before you sit down, it's my honor to present you with this commendation. Sharon Barrett was a co-founder and longtime director of the Canoe Free Clinic, and Sharon's dedicated efforts and fundraising talents assisted in creating the Canoe Free Clinic, a nonprofit organization that offers medical and legal services and patient advocacy at no cost or minimal cost to those in need. Sharon served as the Canoe Free Clinic's sole paid administrator in 1981 and executive director. Her responsibilities eventually focused on the position of Director of Development, and during Sharon's term, the clinic has come to offer 80 volunteer physicians, nurses, and office staff, who serve 50 patients weekly, and Sharon has provided exemplary service to her community. Now therefore, Tom Clancy, the mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, does hereby commend Sharon and offer congratulations on her retirement and best wishes for health and happiness in the future. Congratulations, Sharon. At this time, we'll call item six, public comments. Would the clerk please call the item?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for the city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Five people have presented cards. In pursuit to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Florence. Our first speaker this evening will be Ron Siegel, followed by Mary Harris. If you're the next speaker up, if you'd care to move towards the podium, there are a couple chairs. Would the speakers please remember to give your name and community of residence? Thank you very much. Mr. Siegel.
Thank you. My name is Ron Siegel. I live in Thousand Oaks. Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Mitnick, and members of the city council. As a former member of the Lang Ranch Community Park Focus Group and representing the signature homes, I have some comments about the budget. I'm here tonight and will no doubt be here to implore you to reconsider the $5 million allocation for the Lang Ranch Community Park. In these tough economic times, it's simply too much money to benefit too few. There are two basic reasons for my plea. The first and most important reason is to remind you of your fiscal responsibility to all the consumers and taxpayers of Thousand Oaks, your constituents. And to remind you that such an allocation this time is not prudent in a time of fiscal tightening of our financial belts. On June 12, 2007, in approving the capital improvement budget for 2007, 2008, 2008, and 2009, then-mayor Andy Fox was quoted as saying, "The concern over the city's fiscal health was unfounded. This was in the face of dwindling revenues from sales taxes, a harbinger of things to come. The budget was passed even though spending outpaced projected revenues by tens of millions of dollars. Consequently, because of over-exuberant spending and an unforeseen economic environment, we have a $3.2 million shortfall, and you will be looking for ways to balance the budget." At the last city council meeting, possible cuts in public safety and services were discussed. There were 31, for example, there are 31 city positions that have yet to be filled and have gone unfulfilled. The police chief talked about possible reduction of the police force by at least one detective in the traffic division. There was discussion about reducing library hours and staff. There was even a question about the cost of maintaining the aquarium at the library. It's your primary fiduciary obligation to prioritize the budget and to see to it that public safety and basic services are not jeopardized. The second reason to reconsider the $5 million Lang Ranch Community Park allocation is because during the planning and approval process, the immediate neighbors for whom the park is supposed to serve were all but ignored and, in a sense, disenfranchised from the process. All attempts to negotiate and to compromise with the park district... All attempts to negotiate and to compromise with the park district were landed on deaf ears. The ensuing anger and frustration has led to needless litigation, which is not only costly to all parties but also delays what could be a tremendous asset to the Caneo Valley. This may seem like a provincial argument until you consider the fact that the first phase of development of the park will include a huge amount of grading, development for infrastructure, and construction of six baseball fields, four of which will be lighted. The fact is that this baseball complex is being built exclusively and primarily for Thousand Oaks literally. The rest of us will not be able to enjoy this park for a long time to come. Let me reiterate that your first priority is for public safety and service and for the benefit of all, not just a few. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Harris, followed by Don Droste. Good evening, Mary.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, staff, and council members. I am Mary Harris. I live here in Thousand Oaks. I just wanted to remind you, at the last council meeting, you guys had a list of priorities to close the funding gap, and transit was one of them. All I'm asking the council to do is to please not have that on the list. That is so important. I've been trying to fight for transit between this county and the city, and I'm trying to work, you know, with our manager up at the Transit Center. I'm trying to make our transit better, so, you know, please, you know, try to leave that alone and not have that in the budget. That's my only concern that I have. So, I would just ask council to really look at that and not make that part of the budget. I know times are tough for everybody, but transit is a real priority in this community for disabled seniors and other people who may not be able to drive because they either can't because of their vision or they may have a problem, but they just cannot drive. So, I'm just asking you to really, when you do your goal-setting session, please do not include it on the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Don Droste, followed by Steve McComas.
Hi, my name's Don Droste. I'm from Thousand Oaks. I'd like to say thank you for giving me the time to speak tonight. I am a neighbor of Ron Siegel's, and I'm here to talk about the $5 million allocation as well. I live in a different neighborhood from Ron. I'm active with the Homeowners Association, and lots of the people who live around the park have been joined together and asking me many questions in which I've been representing them. So, I'm here to speak on their behalf as well. The City of Thousand Oaks has allocated $5 million towards the park, and at this time, the city's in a deficit, and it seems as though that park is a luxury, and it's a luxury that we really don't seem to need at this time. With the $5 million, there's a $5 million allotment from the state, and the state seems to be having some deficit problems as well. A friend called me today. They received a letter that they're a teacher in Caneo Valley District, and they may be losing their job. So, it's apparent that our city has a problem, our state has a problem, and to spend another $5 million for this big, huge park is something that I urge you to reconsider when it comes up for a vote again. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve McComas, followed by Jerry Langer. I believe that's Dr. Jerry Langer.
Great. Thank you, Steve McComas, City of Thousand Oaks. Approximately two years ago, this council voted to allocate $5 million to the Caneo Rec and Park District for the construction of the Lang Ranch Community Park. There have been several material changes in the landscape that I would like to bring to the attention of the city council. The first change is that the Caneo Rec and Park District has presented their final plan to their board of directors. It has been approved, and the result of that plan shows that of that $5 million, the entire $5 million will be dedicated to the construction of Phase 1. If you look into what these plans say for Phase 1, Phase 1 consists of the construction of six baseball fields, a concession stand, bleachers, equipment-changing area, but not public park, community park elements such as playgrounds, swing sets, tennis courts, volleyball courts, these types of things which are true community park elements. Therefore, we're spending $5 million to essentially build six baseball fields and grate the park site, which makes it not a community park but, in fact, a baseball complex. In this day and age, a baseball complex is, in fact, a luxury item. It's not a community park that serves the spectrum of the taxpayers in the area, but in fact, serves only a narrow few. The second change in the landscape which has occurred, was already been referred to multiple times today, is, in fact, the change in the economic climate and the economic forecast. As a taxpayer and a member of the local community, I hear this discussion with respect to reduction in community services, reduction in community safety such as laying off a detective or not backfilling a detective, and from a taxpayer and a community member perspective, I just would implore you to revisit the idea of giving the $5 million to Caneo Rec and Park District because it's only going to be for the construction of something that will not benefit the majority of the shareholders, but in fact, will benefit only a very small minority. So, given that it is not too late, those dollars have not been fully allocated, they have not been received by the Caneo Rec and Park District, I would ask that you take these new developments and these new circumstances into account, and that, in fact, that you hold on to that $5 million and do not allocate it for the construction of simply a small luxury item, which would be baseball fields. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker this evening, Dr. Jerry Langer.
Evening. My name is Jerry Langer, Thousand Oaks, and I, too, would like to speak to you all and the city residents about this project. As you heard, the EIR was approved. This project, to most of us living on the hillside or near the hillside, felt like it was rammed down our throats. The so-called input that we gave was totally dismissed. That said, I want to just let you know that the EIR that was approved actually had to acknowledge the fact that this whole project is to be built on the Erbs Road landslide, which has been quite a history and a recent history that's cost the county and actually the city taxpayers upwards of an extra $10 million from the fiasco when they built the dam at the base of this landslide. That said, the EIR said there were a number of mitigation projects or things that they could do and would do and would have to do, but there was nothing talked about the cost of these things. I know that there was a preliminary budget passed for this thing, but we all know about cost overruns. Nothing was mentioned about the fact that, at minimum, we're talking about millions of dollars in mitigation to prevent that hillside from slipping, which, by the way, the city funded a study in about 2000. The conclusion was that any building, any additional weight, any additional water to the existing landslide at that time, hillside landslide, which has the North Point and signature homes built right on top of it, if there was any alteration in the existing situation geologically and geotechnically and hydrologically, that hillside would be below the factor of stability and could be undermined. The building of this project could undermine that. The potential is right there. It's been acknowledged. The costs have not been factored in, the potential costs in terms of construction, nor the potential costs in property damage and personal damage. So, I want everybody to be aware that this is a very significant area to be built on, and we go forward at our own risk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our public comments section. Item 7, City and Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar. Pleasure of the council. This is Bill De La Penney.
Thank you. I would like to pull Item 7H for housekeeping purposes. I will vote against it, and I can move the remainder of the calendar for approval if there are no other questions.
I have a motion to move the consent calendar with the exception of Item H. Any discussion of the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
I'll move 7H.
I have a motion to move 7H. Discussion of the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries 3-1. Councilmember Bill De La Penney dissenting.
Thank you. Public hearings, Item 8A. The city clerk, please open the hearing.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A, Statewide Community Infrastructure Program. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and we have no cards.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. John Adams, Intrum Finance Director, you're going to lead into this?
I sure am.
Please.
Okay. Good evening, city council. Tonight before you is a recommendation to adopt a resolution to join the statewide community infrastructure program, better known as SKEP. First of all, on SKEP, SKEP is a project, a program, that is done by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority. The city is a member city of that authority. The authority is sponsored by the League of California Cities and the California State Association of Counties. The purpose of the program is to finance development impact fees, acquisition, public improvement acquisition, and community facility district financing. This program is under the 1913-1915 Special Assessment Acts, and so those obligations are specifically identified as far as what we can purchase with impact fees and public infrastructure. The finance team, briefly, we do have a representative from the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, James Hamel, who's in the audience, who will be available for comments or questions after this presentation. The finance team, highly respected in municipal finance, I listed him here, RBC Capital Markets, who does the financial advisor and bond underwriter, Oric Harrington in Set Cliff, who is the bond counsel who provides legal guidance, Bond Logistics, who does the administration, Uni Financial, Will Dan, the assessment engineer, and Wells Fargo, who's the trustee. All of these, we have relationships currently with three of the five, and again, they're highly respected in the municipal finance field. Just quickly, eligible fees and improvements. These are the impact fees that could be financed using this program or the improvements that could be financed. This is going to be provided to developers to either finance impact fees or to actually fund public infrastructure, which we would require as part of any development. Quickly, there are currently 34 participating agencies. I listed two that we might be familiar with. Bonds, they actually go out to market once, well, it depends, once or twice a year. Really depends on the need and the circumstances. Since establishment in 2002, they have issued $75 million in bonds. Here's just a simple example of their last bond issue that was done at the end of 2007. It represented seven, or actually, six cities and two counties, and there's the listing of what they actually financed as part of those projects. Just quickly, the SKEP benefits. It's well-suited for commercial, industrial, and residential projects, alternative to fee deferral programs, which we may have, very streamlined, simple applications, administration is handled by them. Long-term, the benefit for the developer is there's long-term fixed-rate financing at competitive tax exempt rates for public improvements. Just quickly, the reason why this came to us is because there's a possible project that is out there, Thousand Oaks Marketplace, which originally is familiar with the program, and their option was to finance some impact fees. It's a commercial project north of Ventu Park. I think it's at the old Home Depot site. I think that's the best way to clarify where the project's located. They originally were proposing to finance impact fees for wastewater, and their approximate cost for this project was about $250,000 in impact fees specifically for wastewater. Again, a very small amount in the scheme of issuing bonds, but when you put them, a lot of different projects together, you get $10, $15 million bond issues. Staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution. I'm here for any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Questions of staff? This is Bill De La Penney.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Adams.
Good evening.
I read on page two of our staff report some of the benefits which would be available to the city if we were to approve this. What are some of the disadvantages, if there are any?
Maybe I'll have the representative from the program talk about it. I'm unaware of any disadvantages. I think it's up to the developer to participate in the program, and so from that, it's at their discretion.
Thank you. Since in this capacity, you're supplemental to our staff. If you wouldn't mind, please stating your name and the organization you're associated with.
No problem. James Hamel, I'm program manager with the California Statewide Communities Development Authority. To answer your question, there really aren't many disadvantages. I know it sounds too good to be true. The one thing it does really do is it takes the burden off the city of having to administer any of these assessment districts that are issued out there. One of the things we've seen a lot of cities approach us to do these for is because when a developer comes in, especially in the case like this developer here, they ask a city to defer their fees for five, 10, 15 years. You, as a city, need those funds right now. You don't need them in 10 or 15 years. So, we're able to finance it on a pool basis across the state. If there are any problems with that financing, if the developer doesn't pay on that assessment, if there's a bankruptcy, if there's a foreclosure necessary, we handle it, we take care of it. The city doesn't get involved in any of that process. The only disadvantage is the city isn't involved in that process hands-on. We do provide you with notice of everything that's going on. You just don't have hands-on control of what's going on with any problems that do exist. So, that's the only disadvantage I would see to it. In terms of liability, these are all limited obligations of the developer themselves. They're not obligations of the city itself, and they're not obligations of our authority itself. So, it's completely outside of your realm of the debt or any debt to the city itself.
Thank you for the answer. Appreciate it. And, Mr. Adams, if I could continue with another question. You mentioned some of the projects that we might be working on. Will staff be presenting us with a final list of potential projects that might benefit from this?
The goal was to have you adopt the resolution which would allow us to participate in the program. It also has a template for what's agreed upon as far as the agreements, and there was a hope not to have to come back to council with those agreements or with those resolutions. So, there was no plan to do that. It's certainly at the council's discretion if we wanted to have you approve the use of the program for each project. But again, these are projects that have already gotten their entitlements. They're ready to go. They just need an ability to finance either the impact fees or the public improvements that we have required them to do as part of the development, and this is just a way to help them take advantage of tax-exempt financing. And so, at that point, it's really, these are projects that they're moving forward, and they're just really asking us for the opportunity to use tax-exempt financing.
This particular program has been effective for approximately...
2002.
What is it, seven years?
Yes.
And why are we joining or proposing to join now? Why didn't we do it sooner?
Again, I listed the project that had come to us. This was at a developer's request to take a look, and we started this discussion back in the fall of 2008. It took us some time to look through the legal documents and working as a team to look at that, work with the program staff up at the authority. look at that, work with the program staff up at the authority. That project, we use as an example. We don't know if they'll ultimately use the program, but they want it as an option if they decide to move forward. So it's the first time that a developer has approached us and asked us to join.
And since there are hundreds of cities in the state of California, and thirty-four are participating currently, should I be concerned at all that maybe not more cities are participating?
I think the authority, the city has belonged to the authority for quite a while. There's three hundred and thirty-seven cities that participate in the authority. Just because thirty-four cities have only used the program since two thousand and two, if, I mean, I can provide you, since two thousand and three, there have been bond issues or debt issuance every year that ranges from anywhere from five to seven cities, and they're all very small dollar amounts. I mean, that's, combining all these issues do save the developer issuance costs and some of the other costs, and so, you know, I think they've had about eight bond issues at roughly, on an average, of about eight to ten million dollars. So should you be worried? I, I mean, this is thirty-four cities that have done it and have been very successful with it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions of staff? Any questions of staff? There are no staff responses to any of the comments or questions? Mr. Adams?
I'm sorry, no.
Thank you. No, that's fine. Thank you very much. This time, we'll close the public hearing. Will of the council? Mrs. Irwin?
I will move the staff recommendation to adopt the resolution to join the statewide community infrastructure program.
Does that resolution require a first reading? Okay. Motion, comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Item eight B, we're going to handle B, C, D, and E all together. They'll require a separate action, but for discussion and question purposes, there's a linkage with all four of them. So, city clerk, currently opening, open the hearing, please, for item eight B, C, D, and E.
Hearings advertised as required by law are open to consider agenda items eight B, C, D, and E as follows. Eight B is a zone change, Z two thousand and eight dash seven oh five seven one, from residential plan development, up to fifteen dwelling units per net acre, R P D fifteen U, to residential plan development, up to thirty dwelling units per net acre, R P D dash thirty U. Two point one five acres of land located the west side, Caneo School Road at Chiquita Lane, applicant is the city of Thousand Oaks. Agenda item eight C is a zone change, Z two thousand and eight dash seven oh six one eight, from single-family residential R one, to residential plan development, up to thirty dwelling units per net acre, R P D thirty U, for point seven eight acres of land located eighteen sixteen, eighteen eighteen, and eighteen ninety-two, Los Feliz Drive, applicant is the city of Thousand Oaks. Eight D is a general plan land use element amendment, L U two thousand and eight dash seven oh six two oh, specific plan amendment, S P A two thousand and eight dash seven oh six one nine, Rancho Caneo Specific Plan Seven Amendment twelve, for ten point five acres of land located on the west side, Caneo Center Drive, approximately five hundred feet north of Caneo Spectrum Street, applicant is the city of Thousand Oaks. And agenda item eight E is a general planned amendment, G P A two thousand and eight dash seven oh one oh five, the two thousand and six to two thousand and fourteen housing element update. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding these public hearings. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Five people have presented speaker cards in pursuit to council standards. Speakers will be allowed five minutes to address any or all of the four hearings. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Mrs. Lawrence. At this time, I would call on the community development director, Mr. John Prescott, to introduce.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, pro ten, and members of the council. This evening is the public hearing for the city to consider adoption of the next housing element update of our general plan. As the council's aware, the state requires periodic updates of the housing element, and it is time for the new one to serve from the period through twenty fourteen. The last time the council adopted a housing element update was in the year two thousand, and as you can tell from reading the document, and from other reports we've given, state law has changed quite significantly with respect to housing elements since then, in terms of the scope of coverage that's required in the element, and the specific obligations that cities need to take on, and the level of detail with which they need to present the analysis and the programs in the housing element. The council's also familiar, one of the core purposes of the housing element, at least in the eyes of the state of California, is to provide, or to require local jurisdictions to provide sufficient land with appropriate zoning within their jurisdictional boundaries to accommodate future housing needs that are basically calculated by the state of California, Department of Finest, Department of Housing and Community Development, based on a variety of macro trends, and then are basically allocated out among the regions of the state, and within a region to the subregions and individual cities. A few years ago, a little over, actually, it's about two years ago, the council and the city of Thousand Oaks, along with all the other cities in Ventura County and the county itself, took on the role of a subregion within the SAG region, and took that amount of housing units that was allocated to this area, which is around twenty-eight or twenty-nine thousand units. And collegially, and with some negotiation, and some controversy, and maybe even a little bit of gamesmanship, allocated that number among the various jurisdictions in the county. The number of housing units that we received was about eighteen hundred out of the twenty-eight or twenty-nine thousand for all of Ventura County, and that reflects the fact that we are fairly far along in our growth curve, nearing at least the aerial extended build-out for our community. So it's a relatively small number compared to some of the other cities, Simi, Oxnard, Camarillo even, Ventura got higher numbers. So the housing element deals with the programs to have the zoning in place for that number of units over that period of time, and then also deals with other housing programs that are part of a housing element, ways that we specifically address some of the state requirements, like homeless shelters, and also our low and moderate income component of the housing element. With us this evening, a senior planner, Jeff Spector, who's been working on this project for close to three years now, and I would say that we're ahead of the other cities in the county, only the county itself has adopted a housing element, and my view of their housing element is they're, probably not, as it's been adopted, probably wouldn't be certified by the state, but they still have some issues with the state. And so we would be the second in the county to actually adopt it. The next step would be to submit to state for certification. With him is John Douglas, who is our housing element consultant, has been working with us for that time period, and is an expert in housing elements and housing element compliance within the state, and we're very fortunate to have him helping us out with this. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. Spector for the presentation.
Good evening, members of the city council. This is an item that has been a long time in the making, and the city, Thousand Oaks, is not alone in trying to overcome what is quite an obstacle, but I think we've addressed what's necessary in state law regarding housing elements. I should mention that this particular item includes an update to the general plan housing element, and related changes to zoning, to specific plan seven, and to the general plan housing element. The purpose of housing element updates is to address the community's housing needs for a period of time. In this case, it's through two thousand and fourteen. Housing elements are one of the elements that's a mandatory element of the general plan, but is the only one that must be certified by the state, specifically the California Department of Housing and Community Development, otherwise known as H C D. We prepared a draft of the housing element that we submitted already to H C D, and this updated element in its final form responds to those comments. As John mentioned, every housing element must plan for a certain share of the regional need for housing, and that share is known as the city's RENA allocation. The allocation for Thousand Oaks totals a little more than eighteen hundred dwellings, and that total allocation is distributed by various income categories, from very low to above moderate categories, all representing a certain percentage of the county median The biggest challenge for the city to address this housing need, this RENA, has to do with the lower-income housing need. So that's comprised of very low and low-income housing. State law actually states that in order to qualify for lower-income housing, land must have a density of thirty units per acre unless the city can show that a different density is justified. And another important aspect of this lower-income RENA allocation, and our need to accommodate it, has to do with any rezoning that we do after the housing element's adopted, to meet that allocation must be developable by right. What we mean by development by right, we mean nondiscretionary and not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. So the question is, how do we accommodate the RENA, the regional housing need? And this is a list of all the possible ways that we can accommodate it. One is to take credit for housing that we've already built, or housing that we've preserved for affordable housing for lower income. Vacant land is included, underutilized land. We also take credit for pending projects with affordable housing developers. In this case, we have two projects that are in the pipeline for development for affordable housing with our partners, Many Mansions, an area housing authority. We also can take credit for properties that we rezone, at density is appropriate for affordable housing, and there's three sites that we're proposing for change tonight on the agenda. And then the last way that we can accommodate this RENA is by rezoning property after the housing element's adopted, and in this case, we're proposing one site for future rezoning. And this is a table that shows that we, with respect to moderate and above moderate income, we have sufficient capacity, but we had to take advantage of all of those methods for accommodating the RENA, in order to accommodate the entire allocation. As you can see, most of that comes from, three hundred and seventy units, comes from the rezoning that's proposed on tonight's agenda. As I mentioned, the city can take credit, according to housing element law, for units that are converted with specified parameters from market rate to affordable units, and we are taking credit for the Shadows apartment project that was preserved for lower-income households in two thousand and seven, and there is a bit of contention with the state as to whether they'll allow us to take credit for that, but we, staff believes that those units are eligible. So in the end here, the bottom line is, we're proposing that there's a need to rezone enough land in the future to meet the RENA, to accommodate seventy-three additional housing units. And because it's done after the housing element's adopted, those, that site, those acres would have to be developable by right. And there's that housing action plan of programs and goals in the back of the housing element, and the first program is housing, program one, which obligates the city to rezone part of a city-owned property on Caneo Center Drive, in order to meet the RENA shortfall, that seventy-three units. Some of the other highlights of the housing element stem from requirements in housing element law, and one of the important ones has to do with zoning for emergency shelters for the homeless. The law requires us to identify at least one zone where an emergency shelter can be established without a discretionary permit. And housing program fourteen is that, that program, and we're proposing, we'll consider several zones where these shelter would be allowed without a discretionary permit, and an additional zone where they might be allowed with a special use permit. The other aspect, when we come before you with an ordinance in the future, is we're allowed to adopt standards, operational standards, for these shelters as part of that zone change. Another important aspect of the housing element has to do with removing governmental constraints on the development of housing, and we have a program number two that provides incentives for the development of underused and small lots. This responds to a specific concern raised by the state. Program ten calls for review of our parking structure and building height regulations to make sure that they don't unduly constrain the development of affordable housing. And program eleven allows for parking reductions for housing types that have a lower parking need, and that can include senior housing, or housing for persons with disabilities, for example. So these three legislative actions, the zone changes, and general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, that's on tonight's agenda, are proposed to increase the city's inventory of land, reduce our shortfall with respect to the RENA allocation, and to avoid this issue of development by right. The first I'd like to mention is a change of zone from residential plan development fifteen units, up to fifteen units per acre, to residential plan development up to thirty units per acre, and that lands on the west side of Caneo School Road at Chiquita Lane, and we're estimating the capacity of fifty-three dwelling units. This site is already... This site is already designated high-density residential on the general plan land use There's an aerial view of the site, there's eight parcels, and two of them are very much underutilized and the others in various degrees. This is a slide that shows the zoning in the surrounding area. Second site is on Los Feliz Drive, it's a zone change from single-family residential to residential plan development of 30 units per acre. It's a smaller site, but three parcels, and we're estimating 20 dwelling units would be possible on this property, and again, as in the former site, the zoning, the change of zone is consistent with the existing general plan, which is high-density residential. Here's an aerial view of the property outlined in red, and between those two is an existing affordable housing project called Leggett Court. And here's a view showing the surrounding zoning, most of which is RPD 20. The third site that we'd like the council to consider tonight is in the Rancho Caneo Specific Plan, Specific Plan 7, and involves a change to the general plan land use element. It's currently industrial and is proposed to change to high-density residential. It also involves amendments to the specific plan land use map from employment park designation to high-density residential. This particular property has a capacity of 297 housing units. Here's an aerial view of the property, it's currently vacant, these are large graded pads, and this is a general plan map of the area. You can see it's open space to the west and industrial, basically an industrial park to the east. And this is a specific plan map. One thing about this change, even though it's an area that's predominantly industrial, there is residential in this vicinity, kind of on the outside of a ring road, so to speak, and this change to residential is consistent with the general plan policies with respect to the location of high-density residential. Another important consideration is Measure E, and this change does not cumulatively increase the capacity for housing of a general plan beyond the level that was in effect when Measure E was adopted. Mitigated Negative Declaration, initial study was prepared for this project, and it evaluates the housing element and the three sites on the agenda tonight, as well as two other properties, one of them being the city-owned site on Caneo Center Drive that was the subject of a proposed affordable housing project in the past that didn't come to fruition. And another site is proposed for development by the Area Housing Authority on Los Feliz The Planning Commission reviewed this housing element and the zone changes, the related changes, on January 12, and they recommended approval, and they recommended approval of the housing element with one very small change. And there was a comment letter submitted to the Planning Commission at that meeting, and staff is recommending additional changes in response to the comments submitted at that time. And these changes are outlined in the staff report. As far as future steps that you can anticipate with respect to the zone changes that are before you tonight that are related to the housing element, they would have to be adopted at a second reading at a future meeting, and staff would submit this final housing element to the state for review and hopefully certification. If it's certified, we can proceed with implementation; if not, we would have to respond to the state's comments and resubmit to state HCD. As far as the recommendations, staff is recommending, as the Planning Commission recommended, that the council approve the mitigation, mitigated negative declaration 261 and its associated mitigation monitoring plan, the zone change, the two zone changes, and the general plan amendment and specific plan amendment, and finally, the housing element update as outlined in the staff report. So this concludes staff's presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Specter. Questions of the speaker?
Mrs. Irwin.
Thank you, Mr. Specter. I have just a couple of questions. The first is on page 11. I talked to Mr. Prescott a little bit about it, but I'm not sure that I completely understand. For the homeless shelter, you have to identify one zone, and then it says such as M1, M2, or PL to permit a shelter, I mean, basically by right. So we have a lot of M1 zones throughout the city. It's only, you're going to just identify one parcel that could potentially be used for a shelter? Or are you, you wouldn't be allowing it at every, let's say you picked M1, you wouldn't be allowing it in every M1 zone by right?
Well, the proposal before you is to change the zoning with municipal code to allow in at least one of those zones a emergency shelter by right. There is a part of the law that mandates that the areas that we pick have to have the capacity to meet the need for a homeless shelter. So I suppose one could argue that it wouldn't have to be an entire zone, but this proposal is to actually change one of the zoning designations to allow it. I don't see that there'd be a proliferation of homeless shelters throughout the town.
But if it's by right, they wouldn't have to come in front of the council and have any public input?
That's right.
Okay. And then the other question is, one of the disagreements where you have, it's in our agenda, that staff, you have a disagreement with the state about whether or not you get credit for the Shadows apartment. Was that a comment back from the state with the draft element?
Actually, it was a conference call that we held with state representatives.
So they didn't officially make that comment on the draft element?
Yes, we don't have an official determination. I don't know if any of the other people, city attorney or John Prescott were at that, attended that call, maybe can shed light on that discussion if they like.
But how did it first come to our attention, Jeff? All of a sudden, I thought they did tell us in a, that they pointed out the planning period, that in their opinion, wasn't that in the?
Actually, in their initial comment letter, they had some very vague comments, just directing us to read the particulars of the law, which we interpreted differently.
And what's happened is, this is, they did make reference to that, and then, and our consultant can speak better to this, this is, we're not the only city facing this issue, raising this as the HCD has designated a planning period, according to them, that started in 2008 as opposed to 2006, and we did then have a follow-up telephone conversation with them, and nothing was settled in that phone conversation. And we feel that we should be able to get credit for it because it was done within the actual planning period of 2006 to 2014 that you're supposed to build houses for. But we're not the only city facing it. We know that this is the position they're taking with other cities that are facing a similar issue, and we just feel that it's important at this point that we continue to make the argument and advance the argument why they should count and why we should get credit for it. And I don't know if our consultant wants to add anything to that, but thank you.
So this, we're going to certify this, or we hope the state certifies it this way, even though the same people that are certifying it have already told us that they disagree with, okay. All right, thank you, no more questions right now.
Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I think I want to follow up on the issue relative to the state requirement to provide zoning for a homeless, at least one homeless, emergency homeless shelter. I think, Mr. Specter, you indicated that once we take that action, then it's a by-right proposition, is that correct?
Yes, that's how it's outlined in the law.
And I haven't had a chance to read the entire text of the state law, but does it also provide, is it just a land use issue, or is it, does it buy for funding, public-private? Can it be conditioned? What?
Yeah, it doesn't require the city to fund or operate a shelter, just to have land that's available with capacity, you know, to meet the need.
Right, if it's by right, does that mean, and maybe this is a question for the city attorney, does that mean it cannot be conditioned?
My understanding is yes, in the sense that they would have to meet, from my wherewithal, it would be a nondiscretionary permit, but they would still, like other things, I believe, have to meet, and this may not be totally vetted out yet, you know, our development standards, because we do have development standards that are just applied to anything, whether you have to come in for discretionary permit or not, but that's my understanding is, and the reason there, there's a reason that it's being done and the requirements being made of cities is because of the difficulty of citing any type of transitional emergency housing. And again, I turn to our consultant who...
How many cities in Ventura County have adopted this? I heard you say just one has actually updated her housing element?
Yes, the county has actually adopted a housing element. My recollection is one of the, it was not certified by the state, and as I understand it, one of the reasons was they didn't address that issue. And it has to do with a very complicated aspect of the timing of when they adopted the element. When they adopted it, it was before that particular SB2 required it, and now that they've been kicked out, they missed the window of time, and now they have to fulfill the requirements of the law.
Not to get too sidetracked, because I am going to follow up on this, but just for the city manager, I don't recall us writing an opposition letter on SB2. I don't recall that coming in front of the council. Did we track this legislatively?
I don't recall, but I can find out. I don't know if it was in the legislative platform. I don't recall seeing specific letters on this, but...
Okay, maybe, I don't want to get too sidetracked, but I would be interested to see if we looked at that, because obviously, a lot of cities and the county, by your testimony tonight, is having difficulty with this, not so much, I think it's important to point out, not so much that as a city we don't recognize the need for these facilities, but clearly, there has to be some conditioning, some local control aspect because of the related impacts for this type of use. And so I think that's the concern, at least this is the concern from this council person and relative to our ability to condition it and place it in an area where it makes sense. And so with that, what I would just indicate is, I'm not, tonight we're moving forward with this, I don't necessarily think it's a good move to take the county's route, because that doesn't really serve a purpose, but I would hope that when we actually identify an area, that is brought back with a lot of thought to the council. And that is the game plan, right?
Yes, and I should probably, maybe I didn't emphasize it, the law SB2 allows us to identify objective operating standards, for example, security and lighting and the size of the shelter and a number of other things that kind of address it.
You know, I'm not surprised, because the folks up in Sacramento have such tremendous insight and vision when it comes to these land use and public policy issues, so it doesn't surprise me at all that they would have, they've thought through that. Okay, a couple of questions here relative to the three projects, specifically the ones at Chiquita and Los Feliz. What are the total units we're talking about there?
Well, that would be 20 plus 53, 73.
All right. You know, if you drive the area, and I know we're just looking at zone changes in the actual, but if we do it, it's by right, correct?
Well, if we do it now, before the housing element's adopted, we avoid the by-right.
Okay, all right. The streets in those areas, the circulation is very narrow, and I'm just curious, we've built a lot of units in that area. I'm just curious, in terms of the circulation or the traffic aspects of it, do we have the infrastructure to support that?
Actually, our transportation engineering folks did an analysis as part of the mitigated negative declaration that indicated that it would not have a significant effect on traffic.
Maybe I can elaborate on that a little bit. The properties on Los Feliz that would actually feed directly onto Los Feliz are just the three small properties that would yield 20 units, and the other one over on Caneo School Road, which would yield the 53 units, actually would take access onto Caneo School, so that, in most circumstances, wouldn't feed into the traffic situation on Los Feliz.
All right. On slide 25, just again for clarification, if we act now in the three parcels, that takes us out of the right-to-build situation?
On Caneo Center Drive?
Yeah.
Yes.
Except, I'm sorry, except for the own, the city-owned parcel?
There's a comment in the executive summary that, I don't know if there's even a good answer to, but it details the land inventory in that even if we use the land that's there and the underutilized properties, taking all that into account, we still aren't going to meet the zoning densities that we're going to require for low-income households. Is that accurate?
Well, if you add up the entire inventory of existing zoning, the zoning that's before us tonight, the units that have been built, the units that have been preserved, the projects proposed by our affordable housing partners, with all of those added together, we still have a small shortage.
Right. So my question is, what's the plan?
The plan is to rezone property as planning the actual housing element program. One is to rezone sufficient acres on the city-owned site upon Caneo Center Drive to meet the RENA.
All right, and I guess the underlying basis of my question is, do we have sufficient property, underutilized property, areas that we can reasonably look at rezoning in order to meet our requirements?
Yes.
All right.
Let me just elaborate a little bit on the site that we have as Program 1, and that's the site that was basically the city committed for affordable housing as part of the Western Plateau Plan follow-up out in the industrial area. The, it was actually even planned for 140 units. We have not finalized the rezoning of that property for a number of reasons, and that's the one that we would focus on to meet that shortfall of 73 units. So that's, in our view, where it would be fully contained, and it's adjacent to two of the other properties that are actually proposed for the change tonight.
Okay. All right, thanks very much.
Ms. Spilde, open.
Thank you. I'm going through the supplemental packet, and I'm looking at this letter by the Public Affairs... I'm going through the supplemental packet, and I'm looking at this letter by the Public Council Law Center. And they are agreeing with many elements of our housing element. They do mention under Point fourteen, the emergency shelter, and that we ident, they are requesting that we identify a zone, and, uh, they, they do say that they support the city's inclusion of this program. Um, this was SB two. Do we know what the, how the RENA requirement came about? Was that an Assembly Bill or a Senate Bill?
Mayor Procham, Council, John Douglas Consultant. Your question, where did the, the RENA requirement originally come from? It goes back a long time, twenty, twenty-plus years. That was, um, part of a previous version of housing element reform.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the question I have is, who is the, this particular Public Law Center? This, let me see here, Public Council Law Center.
You mean SB two, which, who was the senator?
No. No, who is the organization, the nonprofit organization, Public Council Law?
They are, they're, they're a nonprofit, public interest law firm that, they comment on these types of things, they look out, represent many times, um, indigent people on a statewide basis, though.
And do we, can you elaborate as to why we don't agree with their recommendations?
Um, would you like me to go over, is it, we prepared a...
They, they mentioned three, three items, we don't have to go through everything, but they're using, um, let's go through item one and two. They feel that we, we need to further identify or specify.
Uh, sufficient, the January twelfth letter or the one before?
February tenth today.
That came in tonight. And then that's what, I'm letting Jeff know, I'm not sure if he was aware of it.
I'd have to read through it.
And I, do we know when we got it? Because I didn't get it before I came here tonight.
I didn't get it either.
But I would like to say that we continually, um, they sent us a letter on the day of the Planning Commission hearing, as well as getting this letter at some point today, um, that from our perspective, we have complied with state law, and that we've, we believe that we've done what we need to do, that we've, um, that, I'm not so sure that their comments are all that different from the original January letter, and we did do a, um, breakdown of what we agreed with, what we've changed. We really concentrated a great deal on the, their original letter to us, which was also very similar to the letter we received from HCD. I think what's important is, um, how to say this, their job, in a sense, is to push the envelope as far as they can in what they expect us to do, and then we have to be, um, create an entire document that we believe is in compliance with state law, and it does what we need to do to adequately, um, meet our RENA expectations, meet the spirit and letter of the law. And so it's not unusual that we're going to have this sort of differing opinion, and it, I can understand why they continue to push at us, but I think it's also incumbent on us, when we look at it, and we have spent a great deal of time looking at this, to say, we believe we've done an adequate job. We also believe that where there were issues about maybe a shortfall in our analysis, that we also felt that we came up with appropriate programs that offset whatever shortfall someone might have believed. Now, obviously, this is going to go back to the state, what has happened to everyone else's. The state usually doesn't say, gee, we love your housing element, you're certified, although sometimes it does, and, um, we, they are the definitive ones that we really have to satisfy, is HCD, and hopefully, we can do that. But we felt we put so much effort in the first, um, one that went, and when we got the comments back from the state and, um, this public interest law firm, we did take a hard look at it, we made substantial changes, and we really felt that we came up with programs that adequately addressed a lot of the issues.
Thank you very much for your detailed response. Um, I was just curious, because some of these names of, of this, who are giving their time to the Public Council Law Center are high-profile attorneys that work for high-profile corporations, so I'm just wondering whether, um, we need to fear any sort of litigation if, if we don't comply? I mean, that's what I'm wondering.
But ultimately, it's not them making the decision, it's really HCD, and I think that we'd be foolish not to think that HCD doesn't also look at their public, their letters. They adopted a lot of what they said originally to us, but at the same time, I worked for a public interest law firm, this is what you do, and you push and you push and you push, and you get as much as you possibly can, but we have to take the position of the entire city. If at the end of the day, we adopt an element and it's certified or conditionally certified by HCD, I don't think we have to worry about being sued, I don't really think that's their intention. But if they do plan to do that, then we'll need to deal with that and evaluate it. But this is, um, these are more subjective issues of, did you do enough analysis, didn't you, are your programs really there? I think from a state standpoint, they as well will push cities as much as they possibly can. I think what's really important from our standpoint is, are we, do we have adequate programs to address the needs that are out there? And I think that we, as a staff, wholeheartedly have the opinion that we have done that, that Jeff, Specter, that with our consultant, with the CDD, um, that we really have tried to do as much as we possibly can. So, um, I don't think that at this stage in the game that we can be fearful of it. I think what will be interesting is what HCD comes back and really says to us, um, after, you know, everything's said and done. We did have a really good conversation with them on the phone, so we're just going to have to see how they take what we've done. Um, I'm, I'm not saying this that we've ignored their letters, we have tried to, um, make some changes that we felt were adequate, and, again, um, I think all of us stand here saying, we feel that we've, we have made a really good faith effort to comply with state law, but ultimately, HCD is going to tell us whether they agree with that or not.
Thank you. I'm just wondering whether this will ever end with this particular law, the RENA numbers. Um, I feel like it's like widening the freeway ad nauseam. Every five years or so, you'll have to come up with more space to rezone, more and more and more and more. Um, I, I'm just, I don't see the end of this whole thing, other than changing law in Sacramento, and perhaps after twenty-plus years, the time has come to reconsider this law. Um, and, uh, but that, of course, will be a different discussion. The, um, I'm, I'm wondering about rezoning from industrial to residential off Caneo Spectrum Drive in that area. As a professional planner, who's being forced, obviously, by state law, um, you had to come up with something, and, but rezoning industrial area to residential, it would be my opinion that, that that would not have been the most ideal way to go, is it?
Well, if this site was in the middle of, um, Disemployment Park, um, it's not a smokestack industry, sort of industrial area, these are research and development and office-type uses, but it's more of a problem, I think, if it was in the middle, but, um, it's sort of, there's a ring road, it kind of goes around the park, the industrial park, and on the east side of that ring road is, uh, are another apartment buildings, apartment complex or two, and they are fully compatible with the existing, uh, industrial, well, let's call them, uh, employment park uses over there. And the same thing, uh, I think would apply here on the west side, also on the outside of the ring road. So I don't think you have the typical problem of, of adjacency with, uh, a user that maybe has trucks and maybe open early in the morning or, or late. You don't have really that problem, they're not adjacent, so that's, uh, helpful. And just the fact that the types of uses that we see up there are not high-intensity industrial uses is also a plus. So these are some of the reasons we think it's appropriate. There's also advantages, uh, with respect to having residents and potential employees that live very close to, uh, employment opportunities. So these are mitigating factors for this particular change.
And now going to the Los Feliz area. The cumulative traffic impact was studied in the mitigated negative declaration, and it states that, other than on Hillcrest, I think, there was Level C, you don't anticipate that, um, the traffic will get any worse. The, the numbers that I looked at did not state what service levels we would have or see once these areas were developed. It just cites the number of traffic trips generated, but it doesn't indicate what service level we would have.
Yeah, well, the standard has to do with the, um, relative increase compared to the existing traffic and, and capacity of the intersections. And with respect to the items that are on the agenda tonight, we're talking about almost Feliz twenty units, and there's already three units there, so seventeen units, and that's a, a minimal change.
But isn't there another project that might have about sixty units or eighty units? That's also under consideration?
Sixty units, yes, and even with that, um, the analysis shows that there's not enough trips to, to trip the threshold for a significant impact.
And it appears that most of the property owners who would be impacted by this zone change directly are in agreement with the zone changes.
Uh, yes, we did have, uh, one property owner who was concerned that maybe the city would, um, maybe sometime in the future, wanted to, uh, purchase his property through, and maybe use its eminent domain powers. It's really, um, just a concern, and also a, of that person, not of, we don't believe it's, it's realistic from the city's standpoint, but also, he was concerned that if he did sell to the city and relocate, that he might, uh, lose special Proposition thirteen tax, property tax protections. And so he expressed those concerns. Otherwise, the property owner's involvement's supportive.
Thank you, no further questions.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Specter, just curious on your slide thirteen, the subjective language, first point, calls for review of parking structure and building heights regulations to ensure they don't unreasonably constrain affordable housing. Uh, who, who determines what's unreasonable? Is that, who determines what's unreasonable?
I, I would think that would be our determination as to what's unreasonable. For example, if it was impossible to get the kinds of densities that are necessary with our standards, that might be unreasonable.
I see. Okay, any further questions of staff? Okay, there being none, we, uh, we do have speakers. Our first speaker on, I, this one's, and they're on the, uh, on the four components of this item, so this one is on eight B, Gary Greco. Mr. Greco, if you'd come down, please. And Mary Harris, you'll be second. Mr. Greco, if you'd please give your name and community of residence. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, I guess one of the biggest concerns of the property owners, I've, I've talked with some of the property owners, and I am a property owner on, uh, Caneo School Road in the area on the west side where the density change is proposed, and I guess one of the biggest concerns is what happens if, if the property owner cannot develop the property, doesn't want to develop the property, doesn't want to sell the property. Uh, I guess everybody's wondering where all this is going. Is it going to eminent domain? Uh, do the property owners have anything to do with any of this? Do they have a choice? I know in the past, some of the property owners, uh, attempted to build on the properties and, make a long story short, it never materialized because of various restrictions and constraints. Now the city is, uh, talking about considering concessions, in-design parking setbacks, heights and of the like. Uh, also timeline, is this something that we're going to be looking at, uh, really quick down the road? Basically, I know for me, that the property is my home, and it's also a source of income, so it's something that's not replaceable. So I'm just wondering, you know, where does that put me? Uh, we've had the home in the family for decades, and it, it is a concern. Uh, my mother, eighty-five-year-old mother, lives there and really doesn't have the funds to go anywhere, nor do I. And, uh, this is a big concern. Uh, basically, again, the timeline, uh, this, this two-point-one acres that involves my property and some of the other property owners who are here tonight, uh, basically, I noticed in the newspaper, Thousand Oaks has purchased other property, uh, specifically, they just purchased a property, uh, Thousand Oaks Acorn, one-eight-oh-nine, Thousand Oaks pays one million dollars for scenic open space, basically eight-point-seven acres of highly developable property, which the city intends to basically lie dormant as open space. Uh, this property is, is, based on the article in the newspaper, is, uh, is ready for development. It has, uh, it has street frontage, it has access to utilities, it's already been graded. Isn't that something, uh, eight-point-seven acres would seem to dwarf the two-point-one acres, is that something that could be improvised and, and maybe used that? It appears that the city's going to have a larger shortfall if the state doesn't accept those units at, at Shadow Oaks. So there's a lot of ifs involved in all, where the shortfall is going to end up. I do know that also articles I've seen in the paper, that some of the city officials, uh, don't necessarily agree with the state. Thousand Oaks Star, eleven-twenty-oh-eight, Thousand Oaks reluctantly agrees to take housing step. Thousand Oaks Acorn, twelve-four-oh-eight.
Mr. Greco, would you, your time is up, would you please wrap up?
Okay, just basically, is I would like to hear from somebody to know where this is going, because I'm not ready to just lay down and let my property, uh, my income go away, so I would appreciate hearing from somebody and maybe having something to do with all of this planning.
Thank you, Mr. Greco. Oh, that wasn't reset. Oh, it was, okay. Uh, Mr. Greco?
Yeah?
Could you come back for a moment, please? Excuse me, Mary. I apologize, I thought that you were set on, on our standard, three minutes, and the clerk advised me that you had five minutes, so you still have two minutes.
Oh, my goodness, the clock's running, okay.
So please go, you're at four minutes, go.
Okay, uh, basically, again, I know some of the city officials were, were resistant to this, uh, in the Acorn, uh, actually, twelve-four-oh-eight, Jackie Erwin, uh, was quoted in the papers responding, "It's appalling, the state is shoving these numbers down our throat and not allowing local control." Uh, even city manager Scott Mitnick has doubts regarding the state's governing ability. Thousand Oaks Acorn, one-twenty-nine-oh-nine, Mitnick said he wondered if Sacramento is beyond dysfunctional, possibly ungovernable. Based on this alone, I think that the city has some recourse in, uh, in disputing or negotiating with the state regarding all of this. And, uh, I think with all of this in mind, how will other property owners and residents react, uh, knowing that they may be impacted the next round of planning? So basically, again, I would like to, uh, hear from somebody, and I would hope that this wouldn't pass tonight until some of the property owners have a chance to have some input and be involved to figure out where their tenants are going to go. to figure out where their tenants are going to go, if they live on a property, where they're going to live, and just basically, what are the city's intentions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greco. Mary Harris, Mary, there's five minutes for you.
That's okay.
If you need it all. Our next speaker will be Terry Trevor.
Good evening, Mayor Gillette and Council. I'm here because I'm also concerned about the housing I support it, but like I say, I see a couple of things about where we could have, you know, built everything with all the Rena numbers. I mean, when you look at Hillcrest Drive and Skyline, I mean, that, that street is very narrow over there and up by the Spectrum Club up over there, that's really narrow as well. I, like I say, I support building, but, you know, like I said, where are we going to build everything? And also, like I said, with the state being the problem that they're in, and we can't hardly have local control, you know, where, where are we going to be? And like I say, we don't have much land to build on. I'm certainly for, you know, building affordable housing, absolutely, but where are we going to build when there's just not much more room to build? But yet, the state and everybody else is telling us, we've got to meet the Rena numbers. So like I say, we have to see what we're going to be able to do, but like I say, we don't have much land here. So I just want to let you know, I am for the housing element, but I'm concerned about where we're going to build and how we're going to be able to build on land when there's really not much more land to build on. Like I say, Skyline is very narrow over there and Hillcrest is really getting bad as far as traffic. And like I say, you know, Los Feliz is another one that's really narrow. So I just want to, you know, I am, you know, I'm concerned, but I'm all for building more housing, but how are we going to do it when there's just not much land left? So that's what I'm concerned for.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Terry Trevor, next up will be Alicia Del Fos.
Good evening, my name's Terry Trevor and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks and I'm a homeowner on Los Feliz. About the traffic, you know, if you look at what surrounds this area, at one end of the street is a 7-Eleven market. At the intersection of Los Feliz and Caneo School Road is an elementary school. And then if you continue past the elementary school on Hillcrest, you go up to Hillcrest and there's a lot of housing up there. And they use Caneo School Road as a conduit to Thousand Oaks Boulevard. So the traffic right through there is horrendous. And there's a lot of children walking on these streets. There's a lot of, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic. As for me, I've got this little less than a quarter of an acre, I don't really know what you're going to do with it, but I never planned to leave. I was, this house has been in my family, I've lived here for fifty years. I've recently, you know, it's funny, when I, when I was, when I was a tenant, I would rent houses, fix them up, paint them, come home after I fixed them up, there'd be a sign for sale in my front yard and the landlord would say, gee, Terry, you did such a nice job fixing the place up, we decided to sell it. Kind of the way I'm feeling right now, you know? I just put $60,000 into this house, fixed it up a little bit, and I come home, there's a sign, you know, changing the, changing the zoning. Now, I've had some very nice people assure me that this zoning is in no way indicative of moving against my house. And this council may have no intention of doing that. But I wonder about the next council or the council after that. If you were going to move against my house, do it now while I'm still young enough to do something. And I don't, you know, honestly, I can't make a lateral move at what my house is worth right now, you know? And I'm too old to take out a fifteen-year mortgage, so, kind of in a rough spot, you know? So, and you know, it was a nice neighborhood before you guys let them build all these apartments. It was a nice little quiet neighborhood. Now it's, it's noisy and there's a lot of traffic. But just from the selfish point of view, just kind of found a little place, I love this, this town, I just found a little place I was going to stay. And just by changing the voting, the zoning, makes, makes us feel like, it gives you a feeling of insecurity, what's going to happen tomorrow? When you're a homeowner, you feel like, okay, I've got a house, I paid it off. I'm cool. And you find out, you know what, maybe not, because somebody can come along, just like a landlord, and say, you know what, you got to move. That's kind of, I think, how we're all feeling. But you might want to think about that grade school in the middle of this traffic, too, because there's a lot of traffic there. And I want to thank you for listening. Thank you very much.
The city manager has a comment on a couple of the comments that were made, and then we'll pick up the last two speakers. Oh, excuse me. Alicia Del Fos, and the final speaker will be Rick Schroder.
Hi, good evening, I'm Mayor Protem, city attorney, city manager, council members and ladies. I am here also in reference to the zoning on Los Feliz and also in that general area. I've heard Canejo Center Court or something brought up. In listening to this, I've heard that there has been one apartment building talking about Leggett Court, that is low-income. I want to make you all aware that there are at least four low-income buildings within, right across and right next door to each other. And my concern is the condensed area of low-income and low-poverty areas. With that, if you look at statistics or just do any research, if you condense, there's a possibility of high crime rates and my main concern actually is the children. I really have no selfish aspect of this at all. For those of you who have children, I just really want you to consider, yes, the, the Canejo Elementary School that is there, but also these children that live within this area that go to schools around. What is their school performance? I think that if you were to look to that, you would see that their school performance probably isn't of the highest. And if we condense this area more with rezoning, I think you're just looking at a, at a bad thing for our community. I just, our city was zoned, and I am blessed to be here, I want to let you know that right now, I'm a very new member of, of Thousand Oaks. It's been a few years and I just feel so grateful beyond belief and I want to thank you very much for representing us. So we were zoned for a purpose. And you were talking, Mrs. De La Peña, about something that hasn't changed in Sacramento for twenty years. By all means, would you please look at something that hasn't changed for twenty years before you start to rezone areas in Thousand Oaks, one of the finest cities in California? So I just want to thank you very much for your time. And lastly, just to say that I would like you all to consider how it would personally impact you if you lived in that specific area. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Mr. Rick Schroder from Many Mansions. Good evening, Mr. Schroder.
Mayor Protem Gillette, members of the city council, members of city staff, I'm Rick Schroder, I'm the president of Many Mansions. I do want to just comment briefly on, on some of the comments with respect to the apartments on Los Feliz Boulevard. Many Mansions owns two of those apartment complexes, Bella Vista and Ascien de Feliz. And we believe those two apartment complexes and our involvement there have actually elevated that neighborhood. Bella Vista has been there a long time, The Shadows has been there a long time, Leggett Court has been there a long time. So that particular section of Los Feliz has had apartment complexes and townhomes there for many, many years. And I think the recommendations to change just some of the zoning for just a few of the parcels is not going to significantly add to traffic or crime or other things. In general, Many Mansions supports the draft housing element. We feel that it does a good job in describing the need for affordable housing, outlining some of the, the resources that are available, but also highlighting many of the constraints that exist in creating this housing. We think that the housing element also sets out a good action plan that the city should take, which will create an opportunity and the environment necessary for Many Mansions, the Area Housing Authority, private developers and others to develop this needed housing. We particularly agree, though, with the action items with respect to design standards. For many of the smaller infill types of developments, we do believe that some of those design standards, parking standards, should be looked at and should perhaps change. We do have three other observations based on some of the comments that I heard tonight. First, we do believe that the Rena numbers actually accurately reflect the need for affordable housing, especially in the need, especially in the area of the very low income. Indeed, I think it understates the need. Many Mansions' own waiting list for people looking for housing that are classified as very low-income exceeds the Rena goal of 411, which is cited in the report. And I do hear complaints, not so much from here in Thousand Oaks, but other jurisdictions saying that these Rena numbers don't reflect reality, that they're unrealistic, that they're unfair. But I think this is the state's attempt to try to create a fair share in creating affordable housing, something Thousand Oaks has done an excellent job over the last ten to fifteen years, but other communities in Ventura County have not. So I, I hope this community embraces this housing element process and really pushes the other communities to create the housing that Thousand Oaks has. The second observation has to do with this homeless shelter zoning, Action Plan Number 14, and I'm glad people are talking about that. As you know, Many Mansions and our Caneo Affordable Housing Work Group, for the last two years or so, has looked into the possibility of creating, trying to develop, a year-round emergency shelter. And we just finished up our homeless count a couple of weeks ago, and although we don't have the final numbers, we do believe preliminarily, there are more homeless people here in Thousand Oaks and in Ventura County. And we definitely need a year-round shelter. Now, we don't actually think that the recommendation to rezone industrial sites is adequate or necessarily would comply with SB 2. In fact, Senate Bill 2, again, is a very good piece of legislation. The state puts out a very good guide on that. And in answer to Councilmember Fox's observations, it does allow significant impact, or significant objective standards that the city has. Number of beds, parking, requirement of onsite management, length of stay, lighting, security, whole sorts of things. But in fact, we're not looking to put a shelter without, by right. We're definitely looking to enter into some type of partnership with the city and others. So that's something that's a very much a collaborative process. The last observation, though, is that the housing element doesn't really give a priority as to what housing you want in this city. What type of housing do you want? Do you want more transitional housing, supportive housing, senior housing, housing for families? Our stole house was developed in the mid-1990s based on a recommendation from the housing element of 1995, which identified transitional housing as a priority. This particular document doesn't give such a priority, and I think it should. But in general, we do support it, we think it's well-written, and it's something that we urge you to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schroder. Any additional questions of staff? Before I start, Mr. Mitnick, you had some comments you wanted to enlighten us with.
Sure. Mayor Protem, members of the council, a few comments. First off, to acknowledge staff for their hard work, it took a long time, several years to get to this point, so tonight's the culmination of a lot of work. And also, Rick Schroder with Many Mansions and Doug Tapking, who couldn't be here with the Area Housing Authority, they too need to be acknowledged and thanked for, for their hard work, because it truly is a labor of love for them. They chose this line of work to really do something good for the community, so they need to be acknowledged. They are our partners and they do a great job, and we are a leader in the county in terms of affordable housing units produced, and in large part because we have a healthy redevelopment agency that generates a significant amount of tax increment revenues, of which we spend, as required, twenty percent on affordable housing, and we actually spend a little bit more. Also, there are other groups in the county like Cabrillo and West County that does some great stuff for affordable housing projects. On SB 2, the question was asked, did the city take a position? And Mina Labor, our legislative manager, heard the question and has done some research, and the answer is, we did not take a position either for or against, and neither did the League of California Cities or the California Redevelopment Agency Association. We'll do additional research to find out why that is the case. There were no positions taken or recommendations to us, one way or the other. And the Rena numbers, we've heard a lot of discussion on that, just to remind council, because we've been before you on a number of occasions, and I was your representative among the ten city managers and the county CEO in our lengthy discussions over an extended period of time. And we do have a win-win outcome here among all the cities in the county, the tremendous spirit of cooperation, where literally all, all of the cities in the county came together. And just to remind council, we are very lucky as a county, I'm a little nervous saying this over the airwaves here, but we are very lucky as a county in general and a city in particular to have the very reasonable Rena numbers that we have. Many other cities of, similar to Thousand Oaks in California, received significantly larger numbers. The city of Irvine, which is often used as a comparable city to us, they're a little bit bigger, not land-wise, but population-wise, they, their numbers are mind-boggling. I don't know if it's over 10,000 numbers they have to produce, but...
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand with a significant number of low-income. So we were, again, I'm nervous we're saying this on the airwaves, so for the members of the public, I know this is hard, especially if it impacts your neighborhoods, but our numbers are very, very low, and in part, we got away with that, if you will, because of the tremendous spirit of cooperation among all the cities. So I wanted to remind council and the public of that. And then on the homeless shelter, we, as Mr. Schroder pointed out, we do have a homeless population. It is very small, given the size of our community. And it is something we don't talk a lot about, but the churches and the synagogues in the community do a great job trying to provide housing, or shelter, I should say, especially during the inclement weather periods, when it's raining and that type of thing. And the community really struggles with this, and the state is telling cities, you can't ignore it, you have to do something about it. So we're trying to work cooperatively with the churches and the synagogues and the affordable housing providers. So wanted to provide those, those comments. Thank you. Oh, one last thing, a very important thing. We heard a question about eminent domain and what the city's plans are. To remind the council and the community, our ability to use eminent domain as a redevelopment agency and/or as a city has been severely limited, if not taken away for this type of things, and as well as for commercial use there. And we just don't do it as a city. We don't have a history, really, of using eminent domain. I don't know of any situation where we used it for affordable housing. Okay, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Questions of staff? Mrs. De La Peña.
Thank you. We heard several comments tonight from residents who have stated that there is a lot of traffic in the area around Los Feliz. And I wanted to find out from staff, should we approve this tonight? And it appears that we would potentially rezone everything to provide affordable housing. We know that there is a dire need for infrastructure in that area, there are no sidewalks. Who would be responsible then for providing the infrastructure? Is that something that the city would do in cooperation with Many Mansions or the Area Housing Authority?
I think I can answer that. The actions before the council tonight only relate to rezoning a property, which means to change the allowable uses that the owner could put that property to. Some of the properties are presently zoned to allow relatively low to medium-density development, and the proposal before you is to change that to allow high-density development. And that is in line with the general plan that the city adopted for nineteen, in 1970 that shows the Los Feliz corridor from Thousand Oaks Boulevard up to Caneo School Road to be an area suitable for high-density development, and that's because it's close to the downtown area. So I, and I'm indirectly, or maybe directly, trying to answer some of the concerns of the property owners. The state does not require the cities to build any units. The state only requires the cities to show on their zoning maps that we have areas that if a property owner wished, they could develop at suitable densities to meet the density requirements of the state housing element law. And for this category, it would be thirty units an acre, and that's why we're recommending the thirty-units-an-acre zoning. But there's no requirement that the city acquire the property, there's no requirement that the property owner build within that planning period, just have to have the zoning in place, and that's all tonight's hearing is about. In terms of when a property actually develops, that is the... In terms of when a property actually develops, that is the responsibility, then, of the developer to put in the public improvements along their frontage. So when the properties along Los Feliz have developed, they have put in the sidewalks and the streetlights, and they widen the street to the width that's in the city's plan for that area.
Thank you for your elaborate answer. I think whatever will be approved tonight needs to be done, of course, with the improvement of the infrastructure in mind because of the fact that the streets are very narrow, there are no sidewalks, and it is very, very dangerous, especially for the children. Thank you.
The city attorney has a comment?
Thank you. I wanted to also address that question. I think it's really important for us, and as the council takes these actions, that we're clear on the record and what's in front of us. Many Mansions project that's being proposed, and the Area Housing Authority, which are all in that area, are not part of the zone changes for tonight. They are not part, are being suggested in any way or form that that's going to happen. Those were included only in the housing element, as many other sites were, in a special category that we had a conversation with the state about that said we could show them in terms of how we may meet our RENA numbers. We also have a program that says if, for some reason, those projects do not come to fruition, then we understand our obligation to make sure that we have other adequate sites to accommodate those needs. The other thing I wanted to make clear is that even with the zone changes that are being proposed tonight in front of you does not necessitate, nor should we or the council do anything beyond what's in the mitigation measure, in the mitigated negative declaration for this project. And the reason I say that is because as things are developed, as changes take place, that's the appropriate time that infrastructure is looked at. I think that if the council is interested, on the whole, to look at improvements along that area, that that's something appropriate to ask us to come back when the capital budget comes through. The other thing that I do want to bring to your attention, because Many Mansions is trying to be a very good neighbor in that area, they have agreed to work with the city staff, and this is separate from the housing element, so I'm trying to keep these things separate. They are working with city staff and looking at studying the area. Their project, although not in front of you tonight, the traffic studies show that, and their project do not necessitate other off-site improvements, other than what would normally be, what Mr. Prescott already talked about, which is sidewalks. They're trying to be a good neighbor and are looking at the whole area. I hope I'm not misstating. And it's something that Public Works is aware of and is working with them on. So that's, I guess what I'm trying to say is, in terms of this record, it's a very, very different issue than what's in front of you tonight. And I'm not saying that council shouldn't be concerned about those, but it's not part of the housing element to come up with maybe some of the things that people want to see as amenities in the neighborhood, and I don't say amenities in a frivolous sense. Do you want us to follow up on some of the other questions that were asked, or do you want us to wait till council questions are done?
Why don't we close the public hearing, and then when we go to discussion, do it at that time?
No, I mean, we normally, during the public hearing, we follow up and answer all the questions.
If you have?
Yeah, I do have a few. I just...
Let me see if the staff, is there... Mr. Prescott, do you and your staff have any specific responses to any of the comments from the speakers?
I think the comments I made, and I sort of took a liberty with Councilmember Bill De La Peña's question, to actually answer some of the concerns that were expressed by the speakers within that response. I would like to talk also, though, about, one gentleman suggested the 8.7 acres that the city just bought, using that for affordable housing or high-density housing. The difference there is that the properties we're suggesting tonight are already in the city's master plan for high-density development, and that's why we're recommending the zone changes in this area and not in the other area. The property that the gentleman referred to, the 8.7 acres, was actually in a very, very low-density part of the community and was identified as a desirable open space area in the open space element of the general plan. So it does not have the appropriate general plan designation to accommodate the zoning that the state requires for the housing element purposes, and would not be otherwise physically suitable or compatible.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Any additional responses from you or your staff? Okay, Mrs. Albano?
Thank you. Just one other one that I wanted to hit a little bit clear, although Mr. Prescott did allude to it, as well as the city manager is. Eminent domain, besides the fact that the redevelopment agency, which sometimes can condemn private property in terms of other private interests, our city's redevelopment agency does not have the power of eminent domain. In terms of the city itself having that authority is very limited, and if some of you may recall that in a recent election, there were two competing eminent domain reforms, and the one that passed does limit the ability of a city to condemn any property that has a single-family home on it. So I know there was some concern about those. The other idea with these parcels and the whole sort of background of the housing element is to, as Mr. Prescott said, it's not our responsibility to build housing, to ensure that it's built, but to really say that there may be some opportunities in the future. We're talking about a planning area, and if it was my home, I'd say, well, 2014's not all that far away, but we're talking about a process that goes through to 2014 that changes that, but doesn't in any way force you to do anything with your property that you don't choose to do. But it does maybe give you the opportunity in the future, if you wanted to look at combining your property with other, or doing that type of thing, of maybe doing something else with it. But it doesn't force you to do anything, and it clearly, under the protections interstate law now, the city is not in a position, whether this council changes or not, even future councils would not be able to condemn a single-family home.
Thank you, Mrs. Albano. Nothing further? I would like to mention to some of the speakers that the property owners that have questions and would like to get the most direct answers on what's occurring and what's in this process. Mr. Specter, as a senior member of the staff, is available, and he's available by phone if, his number is 449-2161. 449-2161, or you can get that by just calling if you don't have a...
I have another number, 449-2325 is more direct.
Oh, okay, that's fine. What is that again, Mr. Specter?
449-2325.
No further questions? All right, at this time, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll go to council discussion. Mr. Fox?
I'm going to go ahead and move the staff recommendation. We're taking all these in their entirety, or are we going to do them at a time?
My understanding is that we'll take them one at a time, because they each require certain different actions, so even though we heard them all together, starting with 8B...
Okay, I'm going to approve the items 1 and 2, the negative declaration, number 261, and approve zone change 2008-70571.
Thank you. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
I'll read the title of the ordinance, amending municipal code relating to official zoning map and changing zoning classification of property on West Side Caneo School Road at Chiquita Lane, zone change 2008-70571, and that carried 4-0.
Thank you. Item 8C?
Item 8C, I'm going to move the recommendation of the Planning Commission, items 1 and 2, and that the ordinance be read in title only, further reading be waived, and if no objection, introduced.
Thank you. Comments to the motion? Do you need to read that first, or do it after the vote?
After I see the vote.
Please vote.
The ordinance's title is an ordinance amending municipal code relating to official zoning map and changing zoning classification of property located 1816, 1818, and 1892, Los Feliz Drive, and that carried 4-0.
Thank you. Item 8D?
Finally, 8D, I'm going to move the Planning Commission recommendations 1, 2, and 3. And I'd also like to incorporate the findings of the staff to support the recommendations that are included in the attached resolutions.
Thank you. Comments to the motion? Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Item 8E?
Item 8E is the recommendation to adopt the attached resolution dealing with the negative deck and approve the 2006 through 2014 housing element update.
Thank you. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Item 9, department reports. We have none this evening. 10, redevelopment agency reports, we have none. Item 11, committee commission board reports, we have none this evening. Council issues, commendations, follow-up reports on meetings, conferences, we have none. Item 13, city manager, Mr. Mitnick.
Mayor Protem, members of the council, no additional follow-up on request from the public, and we will get back on the SB 2 item that we just discussed moments ago. With respect to the state budget cut, it appeared to be a broken record, we still don't have a budget at the state level. It's interesting to note that it's been 96 days since the governor called a special session to address the historic budget shortfall, still no budget. 25 days since the state of the state addressed, still no budget. The big five, the governor, the top two assembly and senate leaders continue to have closed-door meetings to try to come up with some sort of budget. We're hopeful we'll get one soon. The state isn't going to be in the business of issuing IOUs. Very shortly, they're doing work furloughs right now, people interacting with the state. If you go to the DMV, you'll find that the offices are closed from time to time, and if you're dealing with any state agency, that's becoming a reality. Lots of numbers here, I'm not going to get into it, other than we're still waiting to find out what the impact will be on cities, counties, redevelopment agencies, et cetera. Staff is keeping a close eye, especially your legislative analyst, and we'll share the information with you as it comes in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Item 14, closed session, we have, we do not have a requirement for closed session this evening. Item 15, our adjournment, we will adjourn at this time to a regular meeting, which will be a council workshop on February 24, 2009, at 6:00 p.m. at Los Robles Greens Golf Course Community Banquet Center, 299 South Moor Park Road, Thousand Oaks. There being no further business, come before us, we are adjourned.